We'd like to reconvene to open session and call the meeting back to order. Actions taken in closed session. Trustee Prendergast.
So on a six to zero vote, the Board took action in closed session to accept the resignation of a classified administrator without an appointment or contract with a specified term and to approve the separation agreement and general release as executed by the classified administrator and the district and has authorized the chancellor or designated to take all steps necessary to affect the decision. On a six to zero vote, the Board took action in closed session to affirm the stipulated disciplinary five days unpaid suspension of a full-time classified automotive diagnostic technician and has authorized the chancellor or designated to take all steps necessary to affect the decision. That is all in closed session.
Thank you. We will now have the invocation by trustee Inman and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by trustee Jamal. At the beginning of each school year, when it's my turn to do invocation, which I think of as inspiration incidentally, I like to talk about leadership and especially for our students, our wonderful students who are taking the opportunity to engage in leadership at this level. I know that many of the students that we have have as their dream to go to UCLA and the many places, but I'm mentioning UCLA on purpose. I got to live out my dream a long time ago and went to UCLA. And one of the things that I liked best about it was that it was in the time of the incredible John Wooden years. And he was one of the most incredible leaders I've ever observed. It turns out I was research assistant for the chairman of the Speech Department and he was the best friend of John Wooden. So we got to coach all of the people, all of the players who were sent out to local high schools to talk about his pyramid of success and why the team was so successful. For those of you youngins, they had 10 national championships, seven of them in a row, and it was truly, truly incredible. His pyramid of success doesn't talk about winning until the very end. It's at the top. There are 15 aspects of it and the other 14 are things like being friendly, getting along, doing your duty, helping others. What we would think for a basketball team, the, what happened was that there was respect and trust and true teamwork. So I encourage all of you to take a look at that and any other leadership sorts of things that you do because it's an honor to lead and doing our best at it is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. Please join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Excuse me. It is now time for public comments and to no one's surprise, we have a few this evening. I would remind you that we have two minutes per person and we will stick to the 20 minutes this time maximum. That should be fine with the number of comments that we have. And also, the Board does not directly respond, although this evening there is a, an item which of course is somewhat of a response to the whole thing. Okay, so let's start with our, our people. First of all is Chris Lobo.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. My name is Chris Lobo, ninth generation One Yen U tribal citizen, Director of the Government Affairs of the One Yen U Abandoned Mission Indians, Hachiman Nation, the first people of these lands. For more than 10,000 years, over 300 generations, our people have lived within what we know as Orange County and its surrounding areas. These lands are not just where our ancestors lived, they're who we are. Every village, every spring, every stone holds memory of our people. Tonight, I stand before you in strong support of rescinding this agreement because the process has ignored every foundation of respect, consolation to, that should exist between governing bodies and the indigenous people of these lands. This agreement represents a serious breach of cultural respect, one that disregards the tribe's longstanding relationship with these lands and the sacred responsibilities that come with a connection. The One Yen U Abandoned Mission Indians, the Hachiman Nation, has 924 living descendants directly connected to nearby village of Patuittum, including our current tribal chairman, Nathan K. Banda. Our people are still here, living amongst the lands our ancestors cared for since time immemorial. To move forward without us, not only procedural failure, is a cultural injustice. The harm caused by this process is not symbolic. It cuts into the deep cultural fabric that has shaped Orange County since long before it was called that. Our tribal boundaries define our Aboriginal heart to this region, yet our voices were once again left out of the decisions that directly impact our heritage. Rescinding this agreement is not about politics, it's about accountability, respect, and the moral obligation to do what is right. Thank you.
Let's have the next five peoples come forward, please, and then speak in that order. And give us your name when you do start speaking. Alyssa Cope, Danny Love, Amy David, Patty Mouton, and Teresa Ford.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Cope and I do environmental planning for a living. I just wanted to revisit the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act issue, but for, and I'd like to use that term but for, but for the community benefits agreement, I do not think that Compass Energy would have come forward with this donation. I understand that there's cloudy, cloudiness about this, but at a minimum, I think that the Board could move forward with, with something that's called a notice of exemption with the decision. And at this point in time, if you're thinking about rescinding the approval of the donation, you may want to consider including a study for the notice of exemption to see whether or not this has any environmental impacts. And it would be a graceful way of allowing the Board to bow out without any additional potential issues with this because a notice of exemption was not put forth with the original donation. So I hope that's not too much technical information, but I think your attorney would be able to understand that and it is a standard policy with any decision. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Danny Love and I am the TikToker of the group. I have come up here and I have been firing up the troops, preparing for battle, metaphorically speaking of course, but tonight I have a different message. I want to talk to the Board and have a message of gratitude because our community has come together, it's been a beautiful thing, people have been showing up, meeting after meeting, and you guys have heard our voices. And Carolyn just talked about great leadership and I think the fact that you guys are going to revisit this issue really shows great leadership. And I just want you to know, and hopefully I'm not, you know, speaking too soon, but if everything goes the way I believe that it will, you have a friend in me. And if you ever need help with fundraising, or if you need a loud voice on the floor, whatever it is, I would, I would love to help with that. And a message to everybody that has been here in the streets, you know, with the, with their, their signs on the corners of Laguna Niguel, I want to say to all of my community members, I'm so proud of you guys, I'm so proud of us. This has been such a display of strength and unity from young and old and, you know, every single different background coming together regardless of, you know, what side of politics in the aisle you're on to fight for our community and our nature and our schools. We know this is a high-risk fire zone and the fact that we have come together to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe, our nature is safe, the schools are safe, is really just such a beautiful thing. So I just want to say good job to all of you guys. Thank you guys so much for showing up and we really appreciate you guys listening to us and hearing our voices and we're looking forward to the vote. We're hopefully all looking forward to a very positive vote tonight. So thank you guys so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Amy David and I live in Laguna Niguel. And President Iman and trustees, specifically Iman, your invocation on leadership is critical. It's timing tonight because that's what I'm really looking for. I'm looking for leadership from all the trustees to do the right thing. Ironically, this is just going to settle one little aspect of this big monster that we all have to deal with, but eliminating a community engagement agreement with Saddleback is one step in that direction. So I ask that you vote seven, nothing, and be unanimous and stick together in this fight. Ironically, I don't want to be here. I can tell you, I really do not want to be here. I have been coming to every single meeting with my husband, who was unable to attend tonight because he had another meeting he had to attend to, but he would have been here, right here by my side, fighting for this. And sometimes in life, it just takes one or two people or a room full of people to stand up and just do the right thing. We're not against different types of energies. What we're against is battery lithium storage units in neighborhoods around people, next to day, next to roads that people travel on to make, to earn a living. That's what we're against. So I'm looking forward to a positive result tonight. And then again, I guess we move on to the next potential community engagement agreement and that would be with Second Harvest. So the pressure would be off of Saddleback College and the pressure is now on to Second Harvest. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Inman, trustees, neighbors, colleagues, some of you might even be my friends. My name is Patty Mouton. I've lived in Laguna Niguel 37 years and I bought my first house in Mission Viejo in 1979. I hope that all of you really listened to President Inman's invocation because if John Wooden were here tonight, he would vote to rescind the community engagement agreement and to keep our neighborhoods safe from this really dangerous activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Ford and I'm a resident of Laguna Niguel. I too have been here for meetings since June, June, July, August, September, and again today. Tonight, I want to express my heartfelt thanks for your courage, for your diligence, and your willingness to truly listen. By voting to rescind the Compass Project Agreement with NG, you're standing with the community and upholding the public interest as affirmed by the Civil Code 1689. That matters deeply to us. You didn't just hear our concerns, you investigated, you researched, you asked the hard questions, you weighed the risk, and chose transparency. And most importantly, you found a way to protect the students and the programs that this grant would have meant, was meant to support. That's leadership and that is integrity. We know this wasn't easy and again, I, we're hoping that this is the way that it will go, but tonight, you've shown that public trust and community safety are not negotiable. Thank you for choosing a better path for the students, for our communities, for our neighborhoods, and for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the next five people come forward, please? Gila Jones, Victor, Tom Dunn, Howard Hart, Amanda Quintanilla.
My name is Gila Jones and I'm a school board member in the Capistrano Unified School District. Although our superintendent wrote, sent a letter on behalf of our Board opposing the location of this BES, I am not authorized to speak for my Board and I'm speaking for myself. I want to be very clear that I recognize that BES systems are part of our energy future and I'm not opposed to them in any way. I'm only proposed, opposed to the proposed location of this one, a thousand yards from a high school where our most medically fragile children are educated, students in wheelchairs with full-time supervision by a nurse, a school with a single way on and off the campus. I've known most of the members of this Board for over a decade. I've campaigned for or with most, most of you. I've known your spouses, children, and grandchildren. I contacted five of you before this agreement came to your Board and told you about the proximity to Calvary Valley High and asked you not to get involved. One of you, to their credit, honestly stated they were in favor of it, but the other four agreed not to sign in support of the BES. How many times have I contacted any of you and asked you to take or not take a particular action? I'm pretty sure this was the only instance. You all know me, you all know I'm not a frivolous person, and most of you know how seriously I take my role on this USD Board. I'm still shaking my head that you didn't heed my words on the one occasion I asked you for consideration. I'm glad you apparently decided to do the right thing, but frankly, you owe this community an apology and some of you owe one to me personally and you all owe one to the students of Capistrano Unified School District who were put in danger by your decision.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Victor and I couldn't help but notice those cookies there, so I hope you brought enough for everybody. Anyways, I'm a resident of RSM and you're going, that's a long ways, but I facilitate a civic duty group at Calvary South OC over in San Clemente and our membership goes all the way from Rancho Santa Margarita and we've got a couple of members down in San Diego County. So it's a wide range of membership and they are very, very interested in this issue because fumes, toxic fumes do travel through the air, not to mention all the water danger that happens. Nonetheless, I want to, I want to mention that recognizing that it is hard to consider the, the range of costs, the implications of a certain decision, and recognizing that that decision, you did not consider everything and being transparent about it is commendable. That is a limited, limited character that we have today. And so I have to say, as you Board of Trustees, recognizing that and actually taking it back and thinking about what to do about it is, is very, very, very commendable. So that's egoless character, it's limited today and your actions seem to mirror such character. I just want to commend you and recognizing that there is community impact of what you are doing and you will opt to do the right thing for your neighboring communities. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Thomas Dunn. I live in Laguna Niguel and I'm within 1,350 feet of the proposed site. I'm also a volunteer with the Blessed Group and I think you know what we're all about. I'd like to commend the whole group here, both the audience and yourselves, for transparency, accountability, and most of all, for your community concerns. It takes a village for us to have discussions which bring this issue to a final conclusion, but let's not call it a final decision for that site. That site is still on the books. What we need from you is what we all know you're thinking about and that's to reverse a poorly made decision which was not fully exposed for your good choice. And I think that you now are joining a long list of very, very concerned elected officials and I, I've turned over a full list of all of the elected officials here in this community and all the way down to San Diego, who have signed on to show their opposition to the site. We are not opposed to lithium batteries and we don't need to encourage a company such as NG to think they can run roughshod over us. So no early congratulations, but I think we're all on the right path and I thank you very much, all the community that's here and all of you trustees. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed trustees. I want to begin by expressing sincere gratitude on behalf of the city of San Juan Capistrano to each of you and Chancellor Barnes and the administration for your leadership and willingness to take a second look at the matter. Your direction last month to bring forward this resolution reflected integrity, transparency, and responsiveness to the community. The staff report and resolution before you tonight made clear that what many of us came to realize over time, that the Compass Agreement was not a true grant, but an instrument tied to a state permitting process. Recognizing that and choosing to correct course is the mark of a strong institution that stands for integrity and transparency. Your willingness to listen with open minds and consider the welfare of the broader community is what good governance looks like and that is what public trust is built on. Now, my father was not John Wooden, but he, before he got into community college administration, he was a pretty successful community college football coach up at Chebo College in Hayward. And before I close, I want to call attention to the simple inscription on the plaque that hangs at the entrance to the gymnasium at Irvine Valley College that bears his name. It reads, "His sincerity and sense of fair play were enhanced by his love for and participation in sports." Sincerity and fair play. Somehow, I think my dad will be smiling down upon us tonight as your yes votes uphold those standards in a resounding manner. So on behalf of my city and so many grateful residents, I offer my profound thanks for your diligence, your courage, and your commitment to doing what's right for both the district and for the community it serves. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very touching. Councilmember Howard, my name's Amanda Quintanilla and I'm a San Clemente resident for over 50 years and I've been engaged in South County issues for years. I fought the toll roads with the grassroots movement for five years and I'm quite aware of certain consultants such as Venture Strategic that made it difficult for us, but we prevailed. I've been in strong opposition of a battery energy storage facility in South County. This type, the type of land in our cities of, in the cities of Laguna Niguel, San Juan Capistrano, Dana Point, and San Clemente are all comprised of capistrano land formation and moderate land formation which makes the land very unstable. We've had landslides in the city of San Clemente, too, on Avenida Vista, at, at a Casa Romanta, historic building of ours, and it's been a concern. But I wanted to thank you for listening to the concerns of the South County residents regarding a battery, battery energy storage facility and I hope that you will rescind the grant agreement with Compass Energy. And I heard someone speak tonight that they don't want to, that this site is not, that they're opposed to this site, but I'm opposed to any battery energy storage facility in our South County, at any facility in South County. So I hope that you will vote to rescind this grant and I really appreciate your time and commitment and the amount of research that you did to note that this was a flawed, a flawed project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could the next five people come forward, please? Abby Paulson, it looks like Dwayne or Doogie Hassan, Kat Limaki, Daisy Chavez, and Tim Lineberger.
Hi, everyone. My name is Abby Paulson and I am with Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley's office. We first and foremost wanted to say thank you to the whole Board of Trustees for considering this item again. I know it's a hard decision to pull grant money from students, but when it's for such an important cause, we really appreciate it. The community has shown up and shown out the past six months at least and we are so, so proud of South County and for everyone using your voice for the greater good and to speak up for the things that you care about. But we also want to, once again, reiterate our steadfast opposition to the Compass Energy Project. We know it's in a high fire zone, we know it's close to the I-5 freeway, and we know that it's close to the Capistrano Villas, which is an already disadvantaged community. And it is so, so important for the Board to rescind the benefit agreement so that we can continue this fight against Compass and hopefully encourage Second Harvest to also rescind their agreement and end up in a better place for our community where we listen to everyone and see democracy at work. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daisy Olson. I am a resident of Laguna Niguel. I actually have my younger brother with me here. We are both residents and have been affected by multiple fires that have happened just on the ridge of our childhood home, evacuation orders. But I'm here tonight because I'm a student at Saddleback and at our last meeting, the NG's agreement, they were talking about how there weren't any students present and I am now here with multiple other students at Saddleback. I'm specifically studying environmental studies here at the school and I have been for the past three years. I'm also an active organizer and volunteer with the Peace and Freedom Party in California, organizing community events around Orange County. I'm here today representing the students of Saddleback, like I said, who are all such motivated, committed, and passionate students, so much so that most of them that I've reached out to are busy either with classes or studying for exams coming up or working their jobs to be able to pay for classes here. I've done outreach across campus this past week and every student that I've spoken to has not only opposed the battery plant, but also opposed the Board of Trustees accepting almost $1 million of grant from Compass Energy. As a student, our health and safety is the most important. There is no point in accepting almost $1 million for the claimed betterment of students' education, benefits, and opportunities if our safety is directly impacted and at threat by the inflammation of this battery plant. Now, don't get me wrong, switching to renewable energy resources on this planet and in California alone is not only necessary, but detrimental for our futures on this planet, but these plants need to be built and be considered in safe areas that won't cause more harm than help. I've talked with a wide range of professors that teach here at Saddleback and other schools in SoCal and they all very much oppose the plan and the Board accepting this grant. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catriona Lorkey. I am a local organizer in Orange County and a proud member of the Peace and Freedom Party. I have lived in San Juan Capistrano and in Michoacan both. I currently live in Michoacan, but I've lived equally parts of half my life, and I work in San Juan Capistrano. And I would say that more than half of my life, I've been involved in these communities and these areas I care about deeply. I wanted to encourage the fact that not only the existence of this base will cause harm to humans, that it will also be a huge financial cost. Working class people that are living paycheck to paycheck want other programs for our communities. Why aren't there being funding for affordability childcare, et cetera, et cetera? Working families, students, and middle to lower class people will be the most affected by this. And we encourage that more programs that would affect lower income people should be encouraged. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daisy Chavez, and I just wanted to say that as a student that goes here and lives in San Juan, I disapprove of the base. Trustees, you claim that you care about your students' interests and safety. But if you really do care about your students, I would hope that you would do the right thing and vote against this. Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor Barnes, President Imman, and members of the board. My name is Tim Lineberger, and while I represent NG North America, I am a local resident who would be impacted by the Compass project. First, I'd like to start by acknowledging that we respect the concerns that have been raised in this room and by folks who are opposed to the project. To everyone here, we would welcome the opportunity to engage in a dialogue and address your concerns directly. For example, wildfires are one of the main concerns that I've heard raised. But has anyone shared with you the total number of wildfires caused by battery storage thermal incidents? The answer is zero. With any infrastructure project, an analysis of the benefits, risks, and whether those risks can be sufficiently mitigated is appropriate. Excuse me. For the Compass project, the benefits are significant. Enough clean energy to power 250,000 homes during peak demand hours. Over $50 million in local sales taxes and property taxes to fund schools and services. Hundreds of good-paying jobs and community benefits, such as $750,000 in grant funds to support local students. The Environmental Impact Report, which hasn't been completed yet, will thoroughly evaluate the project's safety features and environmental impacts. And NG is committed to meeting or exceeding all standards through that process. It's worth noting that the newly proposed Orange County regulations brought forth by Supervisor Foley for battery storage systems call for a 100-foot setback from homes. The Compass project has almost 10 times that and closer to 1,500 feet in most places. In addition, we commend the district for planning battery storage on your own campuses, near students, an implicit recognition of the technology's safety that sits in direct conflict with the resolution being considered tonight. As the CEC has stated, attempting to terminate the agreement won't impact the application. Instead, it jeopardizes $750,000 for students to prematurely oppose a project that may be approved anyways. Ultimately, we believe there are more constructive ways to oppose a project or have concerns addressed than pressuring nonprofits from receiving benefits or prematurely denying them based on speculative impacts.
Thank you.
We believe a project of this nature merits that dialogue and encourage the district to uphold the agreement or alternatively suspend the vote until the draft EIR is released. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to recommend at this moment that we move up Agenda Item Number 7.1, rescission of grant agreement with Compass Energy, to be taken care of at this point.
Agreed, agreed.
Without objection, okay. We will now do the following. First, I'd like to ask the Chancellor to share a summary of the findings presented to the board in Exhibit A. Number two, the clerk of the board, Trustee Prendergast, will then read Resolution Number 25-15. And third, we will call for a motion, second, discussion, and vote. So first, we have Chancellor Barnes.
Thank you very much. So at its September 29, 2025 meeting, the Board of Trustees considered a request from the city of San Juan Capistrano to rescind the grant agreement between the district and Compass Energy. After presentations from both the city and the project applicant and public comment, the board directed staff to return with findings regarding potential termination or rescission of the grant agreement. And this is the summary, and it's posted to the board agenda. So a little bit of background. The grant agreement, which was approved on April 28, 2025, is tied to the Compass Energy Storage Project proposed at the former Saddleback Church. Under AB 205, project applicants may seek CEC approval by entering into a community benefits agreement. Compass offered the district $750,000 for workforce and career education programs. The district accepted the funding as a benefit to students, not as support for the project. On July 21, 2025, the district clarified to the CEC that the grant agreement was not intended to serve as a CBA. The agreement is subject to multiple conditions precedent, e.g., CEC certification permits financing. As of the meeting date, none of these conditions have been met. Therefore, the agreement currently has no legal force or effect. Under Civil Code 1689, rescission is appropriate due to the district misunderstood the implications of the grant agreement. This misunderstanding was acknowledged in correspondence to the CEC and by trustees during the September 29 meeting. This mistake is legally significant, especially given the novelty of AB 205's opt-in process and the district's lack of land use authority. Had the implications been broadly known, the district would not have entered into the agreement. Also, it runs contrary to public interest. Since the CEC views the grant agreement as a community benefits agreement, or CBA, it must be evaluated in the broader context of the Compass Energy Storage Project. While there was some understanding of isolated incidences of public opposition, the full extent and pervasiveness of that opposition and the specific environmental and community impacts were not fully understood until after the grant agreement was approved. The project is anticipated to affect sensitive habitats and wildlife. And although SEQA allows approval with mitigation, the district is not bound by SEQA and may independently assess whether the project aligns with its mission and the public interest. Following the approval, significant opposition emerged from multiple jurisdictions, including the cities of San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Nigal, as well as from numerous elected officials. Public sentiment, as documented in the CEC docket, has been overwhelmingly against the project. Courts often consider such sentiment when evaluating what constitutes public interest. Although the grant agreement provides funding for district programs and the project may contribute to grid reliability, the newly surfaced concerns and widespread opposition suggest that the negative impacts outweigh the benefits. Based on this fuller understanding, the board may reasonably conclude that the grant agreement and the project do not serve the public interest. Therefore, the staff recommends the board adopt Resolution 2515, which outlines factual findings and supports this decision to rescind the grant agreement.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Excuse me. All right. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District rescinding grant agreement with Compass Energy. The Board of Trustees, Board of the South Orange County Community College District, hereby issues this resolution rescinding the grant agreement with Compass Energy and finds as follows. Whereas on April 28, 2025, the district entered into a grant agreement with Compass Energy, Compass. And whereas pursuant to the term of the agreement, Compass was to provide the district with a sum of $750,000 over a period of five years for the district's economic and workforce development and the career and technical education programs, creation of career advancement opportunities for students, workforce training, and education. Whereas the agreement contains an indemnification provision that arguably could apply to the district if it were to terminate or rescind the agreement. And whereas Section 1 of the agreement stated that it was conditioned on the following conditions precedent. A, the CEC has issued a certification to the project, which is final and unappealable, allowing 250 megawatts, or 1,000 megawatt-hertz, I don't even know what that means, of installed battery energy storage capacity. The CEC Compliance Division was issued a notice to proceed to the project. Any secondary permits or approvals required from any other agency to construct and operate the project have been issued to the project and are final and unappealable. Any litigation challenging the CE certification and/or secondary permits or approvals has concluded and is final and unappealable. Compass has received, as determined by it, the appropriate assurances related to construction financing for the project, and Compass has issued a notice to proceed with the construction contractor to build the project. Whereas the agreement was required as a part of Compass application to the California Energy Commission, CEC, for approval of the Compass Energy Storage Project, a 250-watt, megawatt battery energy storage system located in the former Saddleback Church site project. And whereas the procedures for opt-in certification were created by Assembly Bill 205, AB 205, which went into effect January 1, 2023. And whereas AB 205 created Public Resource Code Section 25545.10, which states that before a project may be approved by the CEC, the project applicant must enter into one or more legally binding and enforceable agreements, where there is mutual benefit to the parties of the agreement. And whereas these agreements are often referred to as community benefits agreements, CBAs, and whereas Compass had intended for the agreement to satisfy Public Resource Code Section 25545.10 and serve as a CBA. And whereas the district did not intend for the agreement to serve as a CBA, whereas the district submitted correspondence that it intended to enter into a grant agreement and did not express support either for or against the project. And whereas nevertheless, the CEC viewed the grant agreement as a CBA. And whereas the board would not have entered into the agreement had it known of the implications. Whereas the September 29, 2025 board meeting, the trustees considered a request from the city of San Juan Capistrano to rescind the grant agreement between the district and Compass Energy. And whereas the September 29, 2025 meeting of the Board of Trustees, several trustees expressed ignorance as to the agreement's implications. And whereas the board first allowed the city to present its request and then allowed the project applicant to address the board as well. And whereas shortly thereafter, the board allowed public comment and then approved a motion for staff to return at the next meeting to present findings for the termination or rescension of the grant agreement. Whereas since April 28, 2025, district staff have researched the requirements of AB 205, and it appears there have been only nine projects across the state that have chosen to use the opt-in certification procedure of AB 205. And whereas as of October 2025, none of the conditions precedent in Section 1 of the agreement have occurred, and the agreement has no effective force. Under applicable law, a condition precedent is either an act a party that must be performed or an uncertain event that must happen before the contractual right accrues or the contractual duty arises. Platt Pacific Inc. versus Anderson, 1993. If the condition is not fulfilled, the right to enforce the contract does not evolve. Caddener versus Shields, 1971. And whereas of October 2025, the district is only aware of one project that has obtained preliminary CEC approval under AB 205. And under, whereas under Civil Code Section 1689, rescission of a contract is appropriate if a contract is a product of a mistake. And whereas the district's board was unaware of the agreement's implications, and this ignorance constitutes a material mistake. And whereas to establish a material mistake justifying rescission of a contract, a party must show that the mistake created a severe imbalance, quote, "so severe it would be unfair to require the mistaking party to perform." Donovan v. RRL Corp., 2001. And whereas a party can justify rescission by showing that the exchange is not only less desirable for the party, but more advantageous to the other party. And whereas the recently passed AB 205 relates to land use projects as a matter that staff has little experience or expertise in, the district's ignorance as to the implications of the grant agreement is partially excused by the fact the CEC has listed only nine projects that have proceeded under AB 205, with only one receiving approval from the CEC. And whereas the board hereby finds Compass knew that the agreement was a requirement of AB 205 and Public Resource Code Section 25545.10 and was an essential element of the project's application. And whereas the board hereby finds that Compass did not inform the district of the agreement's implications or the potential for robust public opposition. And whereas the board hereby finds that this mistake as to the agreement is its relationship to the project and the lack of knowledge regarding the extent of public opposition allows the district to rescind the agreement. And whereas Civil Code Section 1689 also allows a party to rescind an agreement if it runs contrary to the public interest. And whereas the board hereby finds that since Compass must enter into CBAs before the CEC can approve the project, the agreement must be analyzed along with the effects of the project. And whereas the board hereby finds that based on its application to the CEC, Compass anticipates the project will impact sensitive vegetative vegetation communities, habitat for riparian bird species, special status wildlife species, nesting birds, even with mitigation. And whereas the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, would generally allow the CEC to approve the projects because these impacts, the mitigation would be less than significant. However, the district is not constrained by SEQA and may properly analyze these impacts and determine whether the grant agreement and the project further the public interest and are in the interest of its students. And whereas the term "public interest" generally refers to that which promotes the health, peace, safety, and general welfare of the people of the state. People versus Asamojo, 1955. Whereas the district is also empowered by law to take any action not in conflict with any law. Education Code 70902. See also Coast Community College District versus Commission on State Mandates, 2022. Court holding that only limitation placed on a community college district's board authority is the board may not act in any manner that is inconsistent with any law. And Board Policy 2200 also provides the board is committed to representing the public interest. Whereas the cities of San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Nigal, including their respective mayors, Troy Born and Ray Genaway, and the state legislators Catherine Blake Spear, Stephen Choi, Mike Levin, Katrina Foley, Diane Dixon, and Lori Davies, and a gross majority of public comment have opposed the project. And whereas where a strong and prepondering opinion prevails in the state that a particular measure is greatly and immediately necessary to the public welfare, that factor has an important influence in establishing the limitations of police power in a particular case. Chicago BNQ Ryco versus Illinois, 1906. Whereas the agreement would provide the district funding and the project would contribute to a safe and reliable electrical grid, on balance, the agreement and project run contrary to the public interest. Whereas the district was acting in a legislative and not in a judicatory capacity Whereas the district was acting in a legislative and not in a judicatory capacity in deciding to enter into the agreement. And correspond, whereas correspondingly, the action to rescind the agreement is a legislative action. And whereas the fact that the agenda item was presented in a manner that resembled a public hearing did not mean the board's action on September 29th, 2025 was quasi-adjudicary. Joint Council of Interns and Residents versus Board of Supervisors, 1989. The ascertainment of facts as a basis for legislation does not render the process judicial of anything less than quasi-legislative. City Council versus Superior Court, 1960. Whereas review of adjudicar, uh, adjudicory, uh, I need water. I was almost there, almost there. I know how, I just lost it. Try it again. All right. Whereas review of adjudicatory or quasi-adjudicatory actions is limited to those instances which a hearing is required by law, and there was no requirement for the district to hold any hearing involving the grant agreement. Joint Council, Super 258. And whereas the board hereby finds there is substantial evidence in the record that the board to rescind the agreement because it was a product of a material mistake. And whereas the board hereby finds that there is substantial evidence in the record for the board to rescind the agreement because of the agreement and the corresponding project run contrary to the public interest. Now therefore be it resolved that the motion adopts the findings discussed above. Be it further resolved that the district hereby rescinds the grant agreement. Be it further resolved that the board authorizes that staff take all measures to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Madam President?
Okay.
I move the item.
I second it.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Milchiker to rescind the grant agreement with Compass Energy. Do we have discussion from the trustees?
Yeah, I have a, yes.
Yes.
I have a few comments. I have to mention that our board's role is to ensure that our district provides superb education for our students, a supportive workplace for our employees, and the best value for taxpayers. And we are among the most fiscally sound districts in the nation. Saddleback College was just ranked number one academically in Orange County, number one in alumni earnings after graduation, and among the top 10 community colleges in the nation. Our role as trustees is to make sure our community colleges, our community continues to value and trust our colleges. When Saddleback College was founded on Valentine's Day in 1968, it was called the College with a Heart, and that heart still shines. Our transfer students, career students, emeritus students, parents, and all who enjoy our theater, arts, academics, and just hanging out on our beautiful campus like I do. So it's not worth anything to jeopardize your trust in our stellar reputation. If I had known that a grant for scholarships, which is a routine grant on the agenda, was tied to an energy project opposed by our community, our K-12 district, and our taxpayers, I would never have voted for it, and no one called me to tell me that it wasn't just a grant agreement. I spent over 40 years rating scholarships for our students, and that's not easy. So turning down a grant is not easy, but our college's good name is worth far more than a grant, and we'll make up those funds for our students. Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone who voiced your concern so kindly. We moved here, like many of you, for the excellent schools and colleges, and I fell in love with Saddleback while I attended classes while my sons were in the excellent preschool here. As a research biologist, I've listened carefully and studied the facts. Turning down scholarship money isn't easy, but our reputation, our college's reputation, our love by the people in our community is too important, and the support of all you is most important. So we thank you for your concern, and we're with you. Thank you.
Other discussion? Would you like to go, Mr. Prendergast?
Okay. Like trustee Milchiker, I do want to thank the public. There's nothing you know I do teach American government, and I encourage my students to go to board meetings and see how local government works and write letters to elected officials. So I think it's a very important process or part of the process for the public to speak to their representatives. In this case, some of the comments I'm about to make, I'm not referring to the general public, I'm referring primarily to those that it applies to. I'm going to be turning 60 on Wednesday, so I've been doing a lot of life reflection. And one of the things I look back at is my formative years, which were in the Midwest and back east, North Carolina and Missouri. And in those formative years, I still remember this saying, "You get more flies with honey than vinegar." For the last six months, I've been threatened, coerced, demanded. I was prepared to vote no tonight, because I don't like that. It's not the way I get things done. To Gila, if I was one of the five you sent it to, I don't remember getting it.
I didn't get it.
And I apologize if I did, because I do appreciate your relationship. To the indigenous tribes, I feel you and I see you. You're part of it. Up until tonight, I've heard the word please three times in six months. Up until tonight, I've only heard thank you once. Tonight, five times. Only after we decided to do what you've been demanding, coercing, and threatening. The fact that it's been laid on our laps, that it's somehow our purview to justify this project, to approve this project, when it has nothing to do with, we have nothing to do with that. It's all the CEC's job. We did not know the impact. I 100% agree with that aspect of this resolution. We couldn't have. The fact that we've been accused of somehow knowing any of that and ignoring it and colluding, the only collusion I've seen in the last six months, that at least one of our board members has been colluding with the city of San Juan Capistrano orchestrating opposition against something we have voted on unanimously, which is a violation of ethics and board policy and ED Code. But none of us that I know of colluded in any way to approve this grant agreement with any kind of animosity or malice. Our legal has told us that by voting yes on this, we are putting ourselves in legal jeopardy of a lawsuit from NG. And that they could not in good faith recommend that we vote yes on this. All they could do is present us the findings and say, "If you do this, this might be how you get out of that lawsuit." We're already facing money issues because we are such an amazing college system that promotes DEIA and believes in that acronym, diversity for our students, equity for our students, inclusion and access for our students. Because of that, we are being threatened by the federal government to lose funding for our students. Our staff was trying to find money to offset loss of that funding. So I don't blame any of the people involved. People like President Stern were thrown under the bus, our chancellor was thrown under the bus, a few other people, Anne Marie under the bus, for nothing that they did wrong. So I haven't fully decided how I'm going to vote yet, but I'm telling you right now, the people who spoke tonight moved me in another direction. But for the past six months, I came in here saying no. And I just want you to understand that when you're going around trying to get things done, because it doesn't work for some of us from the Midwest and back east. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Madam President.
Oh, madam, madam, Mr.?
Well, I wasn't going to speak, I did move the item, but I think we had two eloquent statements here by trustee Milchiker and trustee Prendergast. So let me just say that I did the pledge of allegiance tonight, and I think everyone knows the pledge, liberty and justice for all. I mean, let's think about this, how amazing it is that in this country, we allowed all of you and others multiple times to come to this room, which is your right, and I believe in, to demand, to yell, cajole, condemn, accuse. You have that right, and thank God you do. We have an amazing country that allows this to happen. I spend a lot of time pursuing justice, freedom, liberty, and other parts of the world. And the injustices, the injustices I see, beheadings, extrajudicial killings, rape, mutilating females on camera, and parading them on social media. So what I try to do, and I do actually in most of my other time, is seek justice. And in those countries, if, if they allowed, they wouldn't allow you to do what you've done, which is great that we allow it. And if you did, you wouldn't be coming, you wouldn't be able to come back and do it. So God bless the United States of America for allowing this to happen. I would say, you know, I said everything that I wanted to say at, at the prior meeting, and I do agree with the remarks and the text in the, in the resolution today. And I thank again, I see her right there. You're one of the main reasons that, I mean, council member Odo reached out to me specifically and took me to the site. Another member of, of another city council said to me, "I want to make you a hero." And let me, let me be very clear on something. I'm not looking to be a hero. I'm not. I'm looking to make this college and Irvine Valley College better. And how proud we all should be that we have the two best community colleges in the state and the two best community colleges in the nation. I, I could not be prouder of the, the work that, that we do, where our students, of course, the student, you're, you're amazing. Thank you for coming tonight. You're, you're, you're the reason, one of the key reasons, probably the key reason why, what, Saddleback now is, what, number one? You can't get more number one than number one. You just can't. And then our, our faculty, I see the representatives over there, of course, the classified staff, our unsung heroes, and then the administrative leadership. So we do have the students' concerns at heart. That's why we're here. The loss of funding is, can we make it up? I don't know, maybe. We have two foundations. I attended Irvine Valley College Foundation Gala on Saturday night, made my contribution. Oh, I'm sorry, Saddleback College. I forgot, my bad. The Saddleback College Foundation Gala, that we raised money for our students. And I've worked hard, I, I've heard, well, we need to, the board needs to work harder to make up the money. Yeah, I mean, of course, sure. That's why I signed up for this. I happen to have, run multiple businesses, I have connections in the community, and I, I've done that. That's what I do as a board member. I brought Amazon to this district. Brought in over, I don't know, over a million dollars to Saddleback College, to forge that partnership. So we're, we're doing our part, and, and so I'm proud to be part of this district and, you know, for the, and I believe in local control. I don't like the usurpation of local control. These are land use decisions, we're not a land use agency, that's not our job. We never intended this to be a land use decision, nor did we intend it to be the trigger. So it's for these reasons that I am going to vote yes.
Speaking of students we appreciate so much, student trustee Leonard?
First and foremost, the students that showed up, I am so beyond proud of you. Students like you are why this school is great. I'm very sorry that a lot of you didn't know about this project from the beginning, but seeing young students come out and speak their mind is so empowering. And please do not ever stop and do not let anyone steer you away from ever, ever doing that. Secondly, to the members, okay. Forgive me, I'm not as politically sound as my fellow trustees up here. I am so proud of the members of the community that came out and spoke their mind. That is America. From 17 to 25, I spent years of my life in nations, fighting and defending for people that could not do that. Seeing people do this is what makes America, America. It is what makes this community our community. And I will end it with this, the acts of the godless will never silence the voice of the truth. Have a good night.
And, 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 I want, I want to thank, thank our student trustee for as many years to service as a Marine fighting for our country.
Oh. Trustee Rydell?
I wanted to share with all of you the board policy, we do a lot with our board policies that provides, it says the board is committed to representing the public interest. We don't hear that as often as the board is obviously committed to students' education and their goals and how far they can go. We're here to, to pay, to pay that, to, to make that path happen. And I am very proud of our board that we were committed to represent the public's interest. And I heard tonight a lot about allowing you. I never thought of that I allow you to walk into this room. I believe that it was your right, and you supported us, or you wanted us, wanted to know us better, as we wanted to do the same with you. This room could be filled with students, and it would be the same. And I feel that you, most of you, were my constituents, and what I heard insinuated tonight, I was very disappointed in that, that this board does not see what is important to those of us who represent you. And I just wanted to share that. And one more thing, it says here, the term "public interest" generally refers to that which promotes the health, the peace, the safety, and general welfare of the people of the state. Now, I would say the people of our area, our district, and you are our district, and we will look to promote the health, peace, safety, and general welfare of you and the students that you produce or bring to Saddleback or IVC. So thank you very much for all of your energy. It's been an amazing show. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think a lot of great things have been set up on the dais this evening, and I just wanted, you know, there's that phrase that it takes a community and it takes a village, and that is so true. I just want to thank the community at large, you've all got busy lives and, you know, families to raise and things to do, and to come to our board meetings over and over again to write letters, emails, letting us know how you feel. It takes time, and I appreciate that time that you took because you're passionate about a particular subject matter. And be like that with everything, not just the energy project, but everything in life, because by being vocal and being engaged, you can make a difference. And I can tell you by, you know, the, the comments and, and the commitment from this audience and getting us to move in the right direction was really helpful, and that really helped move the needle in my mind. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future, and it's been an honor to serve all of you, and continue to stay engaged because by working together, we can all make a difference, not just on this one item, but on a lot of things in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dak?
So I'm only, I only have a few things to say. First, I'm going to echo what many have said up here, I really do appreciate the public coming out and voicing their concerns about this project. I had only wished that this amount of fervor would have been here the day we actually voted on this, because we didn't have any public comments that day. And while there may have been members of the public that reached out to me and they spoke to me about this battery project, it was never in the context of, oh, well, don't approve that grant agreement. It was, this is kind of close to Saddleback, you should be concerned about it. Nothing about anything on our agenda was told to me about what this would do. And when this came up, I asked my chancellor, are we in support of this project if we approve it? We said at our board meeting, no. Just because we accept a grant does not mean that we are in support of the project. We came back when we had some public outreach and we wanted to do a neutrality statement, and the public wasn't happy with that. So this board has never been in support of the project, we've never been opposed to the project, we have always been neutral to the project. We would never have received any money from this grant if we, you know, regardless of what happens tonight, if, if we keep the grant agreement, we don't receive any money until this thing passes CEC and gets built and it's over a period of five years. So no money has, we've not received anything, we're probably not going to receive anything for a long time if we keep this grant. But I think the public sentiment is clear, and so I will be voting yes to rescind this grant agreement. I hope that the community stays engaged with what this board does in the future so that we don't run into issues like this going forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to wind up the discussion here. The thing I taught in community college was public speaking, and I taught the students to formulate an argument and have thoughts and have evidence and have passion and have genuineness. And I watched them do that, sometimes in student government, sometimes with a legislator, and so forth. I did always try to impress upon them that using genuineness, and I watched them do that, sometimes in student government, sometimes with a legislator, and so forth. I did always try to impress upon them that using things like blood money and those kinds of phrases usually, or the word "demand" usually set you back rather than set you forward, that's already been mentioned slightly. But I do think the idea, you know, one of the things I said was, someday, there's gonna be, whether, you know, because public speaking is scary to students, they don't want to do it. And I said, someday, there will be something that will come into your life that will be so important that you absolutely have to talk about it, so you might as well have the skills to do that. And I remember when I got acrosswalk in University Park because the little kids were bouncing across and the cars were zigging in and out, and, of course, I wasn't afraid to do that because it came sort of naturally to me and I like it, but many other people got their nerve at that time, and, you know, we got that passed. And you have shown that same kind of passion and genuineness and care, and I hope that you continue to be involved and that it is as positive as possible. With that, I believe it's time to vote. On a seven to zero vote, with student trustee also voting yes as advisory, the motion carries. We will now have a five-minute break, and we know that you guys will probably want to hit the road, and we have a lot of work to do. All right, let's call the meeting back to order, please. It's nice to look at this smaller group. Okay, number four is oral reports, and we are limited to two minutes as well. Let's start with Board of Trustees, and let's start with trustee Milczuk.
Since our last meeting, I attended several wonderful events at our colleges. At the Saddleback College Multicultural and Basic Needs Ribbon Cutting, we celebrated culture and community in a vibrant event with more than fifteen hundred participants and delicious meals featuring Seoul, Mexican, Chinese, and Peruvian, Persian, I had Seoul food there, it was great. At the IVC Guided Pathway Events, led by our hard-working librarian Brandy Idelman, was another success. Many professors and classified professionals volunteered to help students explore their own paths to success. There was a great transfer and career Santa presentation, and of course Jimmy John's Foods. At the Banner Town Hall Meeting was very informative, it was great to hear staff input, it was great to hear staff input directly, how they feel about it, and I'm glad our leadership team is already responding to their needs. At the Orange County Legislative Task Force, we reviewed upcoming state and federal activity based on legislation that will benefit students across all of our four community colleges in Orange County. The Saddleback Gala at ATEP was inspiring, and our generous, and it was really fun to have it at ATEP, I really like having it at our colleges, so people can actually be there and see how great our colleges are. And once again, many people, a lot of people opened up their wallets for scholarships, and the fairies were our top supporters as usual, so we thank them. Finally, trustee Bartlet and I joined administrators serving meals to our wonderful classified professionals, the Classified Professional Day. They had one Classified Professional Day for people that worked during the day and another one for the night staff, I thought that was great. And so we want, and many administrators were serving because we want to really thank our wonderful classified employees. And a big congratulations for Saddleback College, just named the best community college in Orange County by the Orange County Register. I'm proud to be, represent such outstanding colleges and dedicated employees and amazing students, it's truly the heart of our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam President. So since our last board meeting, I have also had the pleasure of attending on October eleventh, the Saddleback College Gala at ATEP. It was a perfect evening, showing guests around the new culinary and automotive facilities, dining under the stars, plus significant fundraising for the Saddleback College Foundation to benefit our students. And then on October sixteenth, I also enjoyed working with trustee Milczuk, serving lunch to our classified staff and thanking them for their dedication and good work. For the balance of the month, October twenty-first through twenty-fifth, I'll be attending the National ACCT Leadership Congress for the balance of this week. October twenty-ninth, I look forward to attending my first trustee listening session to hear from faculty, staff, and students in a roundtable discussion to share thoughts and ideas for the upcoming year. And October thirtieth, I'll be attending the OCBC Economic Forecast, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dak.
I'm gonna keep it really short. I was happy to attend the gala, just as many other trustees here were able to attend. It was really fantastic having that at our ATEP facilities instead of at the Ritz-Carlton. It is very versatile what we can do up at Saddleback at ATEP, and I'm looking forward to more events like this in the future. And lastly, I was happy to attend the Black Chamber Banquet on October sixteenth with a couple other trustees up here. So that is it for my report.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, as was mentioned, the Gala was amazing, I believe it's my first one. I've never been able to make it for so many different reasons year after year, but this one I was able to go. And I think I made up for not having been to one by paying five thousand dollars for a trip to Idaho. And I also will be apparently going to very good seats at an Angel game and the Aquarium of the Pacific. It's why they serve alcohol at these events. But yeah, so thank you for that. And then I was at the Orange County School Board Association Dinner on the fifteenth, where we got a presentation from Dr. Candy Singh on Leading Together, Trust and Inspire, which is so fitting because we're gonna have to go through a leadership search soon. So it's good that, because my birthday is in two days, I was the closest at the table to a birthday, so I won the book as a centerpiece, so I can read all about leaders who trust and inspire. And I find that we already kind of have three in our midst, our chancellor and our two presidents, and assistant chancellors and our vice chancellors and APs. We've done an amazing job with our leadership, and I hope that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jamal.
Well, what a nice thing to say. I agree with all of it. I'll be short, the Gala, Saddleback College, sorry, I misspoke, no, we actually wasn't planning on speaking, but Saddleback College Foundation Gala, under the stars at ATEP, was awesome. John, you should think of doing it at ATEP. You guys. Yeah, it's like one mile from his house. That was amazing, and that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. I went to a few events, we haven't mentioned, but that, I know it was in September, but I really enjoy going to IVC and attending the, they said ground opening, but it was really the first IVC faculty hub that we've ever had, and it's a great place to share, you know, information and network with your fellow colleagues, so I'm really happy that you have it. And I met with Senator Catherine Blackspier. She was very informative, but we met in Rancho Viejo, Mission Viejo, and she had a lot of good things to say. Unfortunately, she is more of energy as opposed to education, but she listened to us and I appreciated that. I also participated in the ribbon cutting at the College Center here at Saddleback. I want to say that that was the greatest multi-function, multicultural event that I've ever attended here at Saddleback. That was amazing. My expectations were there, but it went beyond my expectations in how much participation we had amongst our students. I also want to share something with all of you, and I have permission to say this, but I want all of you to keep Bill Hewitt in your prayers. It's really serious now, and he may lose his leg, so I'm really hoping for the best, and I just believe in prayer because a miracle happened in my family, so just keep him in your prayers. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I had an interesting month. One of the, the thing about foundations is kind of neat, and I'm so happy to be involved in these things. The gala was really fun, and again, the location made it really special, and there were people that hadn't been at ribbon cutting that we were talking to, and they were like, wow, this is neat, because it is. And then on sixteenth, it was Giving Day, and the Irvine Valley College Foundation cleared a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on Giving Day, and they didn't have to pay for a meal, it was just pure cash, which is just, it was ten thousand dollars above the goal, so that was, that was really special. I had the opportunity to talk on Laguna Woods TV, and President Stern was kidding me because I think it went really well, and I got a lot of things, like I slipped in a few comments here and there that sort of had to do with the question, but then she asked me, what does ATEP stand for? And I'm sitting there, I mean, I've heard ATEP, what, a thousand times, and I don't know how many times I've heard, and I'm looking at my notes and it's not there, so I don't know, I felt like I was a total failure, but it was fun, and she's very, very nice host, and so very easy to talk to and work with. And I don't see the timer, but I've probably used up my time, so that's it for me.
May I just say, I'm very sorry that I couldn't come to the Gala. I love going to them, and especially that it was at ATEP, and I wanted to see how they did it. But I was in the back roads of Vermont, and, sorry, I, it was an opportunity to go at peak season, but it's not peak, it's not peak at all this year. So, but it was still wonderful to see how people live in a different part of the world, and I so respected their quiet, slow pace. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Blake Leonard.
I also got to attend the Gala. Unfortunately, due to three different midterms, I did not have any more events go on, but what I must say about the Gala is that I have no doubt that we'll be able to raise more and more money with the generous donors that everyone did, so I have full faith and confidence in the community that we will do just fine. If there was ever an award for best partying community college, I have no doubt that we would win that. And undoubtedly, the students of this district are the future leaders of this country, just seeing ATEP was mind-blowing, and the resources we have, I have no doubt how awesome the students will turn out in the future. And I must give a shout-out to our veteran student, James Bugard, who got selected to go to Washington DC for the Student Veterans of America Leadership Fellow Institute, so shout-out James, thank you for making the vets proud. And ultimately, I just want to thank God for the opportunity to serve with such great people, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We now have the Associated Student Government, Maha Ahmad, and she's going to give reports for both of the colleges.
Hi, I'm gonna give a report on behalf of Noah Aguilar, the ASG president of Saddleback College, so just give me one moment to pull up his report. So I'm just gonna go off of exactly what he sent me. He said, "I would like to start off with mentioning that ASG hosted our Coffee, Tea, and Treats to Go Event to support students through a stressful exam period, providing refreshments, encouragement, and a sense of campus community. We have also officially begun planning for our annual ASAC advocacy trip to Washington DC, where our student delegation will meet with national leaders to address federal issues impacting community colleges. Lastly, ASG is preparing for the upcoming California election cycle, including informational efforts surrounding Proposition 50, to ensure our students are educated, engaged, and empowered to participate in the democratic process." That's all for my report, thank you. That was Noah's report, so I'll go ahead and go on to my report, if that's okay. Yeah, let me just pull it up. So yeah, greeting members of the board, I'm gonna start off my report to cover our civic engagement activity that our vice president of external affairs hosted and planned and executed. The civic engagement committee basically hosted a drive where, that was called Donuts for Registration, where they were able to register sixty-five students to vote and informed over ninety students, and gave all those ninety students donuts, of course, about Proposition 50, about that special election that occurred. They were able to partner with IVC Office of Student Life and invited OC League of Women Voters to help register, vote by paper and online. The second report I have to give is ASIVC attended our annual retreat in Lake Arrowhead, where ASIVC engaged in team-building exercises, our ASIVC executive board led strategic planning sessions, and ASIVC was fortunate enough to receive an informational and motivating presentation from Vice President Dr. Martha McDonald about Inspire 2035, allowing ASIVC to align our goals and initiatives in support of Inspire 2025, and ASIVC was also given the chance to give feedback on the project, so I'm excited to see where that goes. And lastly, for holiday sake, Halloween is coming up and it's around the corner, so ASIVC will be hosting an event to increase student engagement and to, you know, have students feel like they have a community during the holidays and during midterm season. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback Academic Senate, Dan Walsh.
Hi, Frank Gonzalez here for Dan Walsh. So I just wanted to start off by saying congratulations to our newly-elected part-time faculty senators, EJ Baldonado Wilkins, Bruce Gilman, Nancy Yala, and Ava Marie Rodriguez-Morris. Also want to point out that Ava Marie is involved in the statewide academic senate quite a bit. This traction of our part-time faculties' involvement in academic senate led us to pass a resolution supporting part-time faculty compensation for shared governance participation in important committees like academic senate, consultation council, the faculty association. I know our sister college is working on drafting a similar resolution, as are other colleges to the north of us in the coast district. And then, lastly, I just want to acknowledge department chair and other faculties who have been working in this first half of the semester to, you know, normal business, but which involves program reviews, scheduled curriculum reviews, creating new, exciting curriculum, all the changes due to common course numbering. So, you know, I know in the last couple of years, we've all had, at least at the colleges, some assembly bill fatigue, for lack of a better term, but everybody has been staying on top of everything, so kudos to all our faculty that have helped keep the ship afloat. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you. Irvine Valley Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
Thank you. This evening, I wanted to chat a little bit about a program that we have launched at IVC, and it's called the Future Ready IVC Community of Practice. And it is a campus-wide professional learning experience that has invited faculty, classified professionals, and our administrators to explore what it means to be a community college 3.0 institution. So if you're wondering, what is that? Well, an institution that ensures that every certificate and degree leads to a real opportunity for our students. And we are advocating to build programs that connect learning to purpose, credentials to careers, and education to upward mobility. And it's about aligning what we do in the classrooms and student services and our operations so that our students leave our colleges prepared to thrive and not just to finish. In this work, I want to recognize two faculty who are leading it, and they're doing so with great care and vision, Professor Summer Surpas and Professor Jeff Wilson. They have taken the lead in advocating for and promoting the community of practice across our college. They invite colleagues to the conversation, they model collaboration and help others see how this initiative can strengthen the heart of what we do as educators. For me, and I'm thinking about this because we had our community of practice today, this work has been a powerful reminder that faculty professional learning is not just about aligning more work and adding more things to our plate, it's about deepening our purpose, it's about aligning what we teach with why It's about aligning what we teach with why we teach. And while change can sometimes feel uncertain, I'm deeply hopeful, because I see in our faculty the creativity, compassion, and courage needed to meet the moment. So through this community of practice, I believe that we're not only redefining student success, we are rediscovering what it means to be educators in an evolving world. And as we help our students become future-ready, we're being called to become future-ready ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Faculty Association, Robert Melendez?
Good evening. As faculty, we depend on technology every single day for grading, communication, and connecting with our students. But our growing reliance on a few select systems also means that when they fail, so does our ability to do our jobs effectively. As you may or may not know, Canvas was down for most of the day. And although that's not Canvas's fault, nor is it the fault of this district or anyone here, of course, we can blame Amazon for that, one thing, I guess. And although I'm sure our students may have enjoyed a little bit of the break, what it did show was just how reliant we are on one system. And I think as we look to innovate, as we look to move forward, we want to encourage that as faculty, and I think faculty a lot of times are helping lead that way. But I do think we need to be aware and just cognizant of what it does when we do rely too much on one or two systems, and how if one or two of those systems go down, it can really cripple a lot of what we do every day. And obviously, that means communicating, connecting, and being able to educate our students. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Irvine Valley College Classified Senate? No. How about Saddleback Classified Senate? Okay. Desiree Ortiz, California School employs.
Thank you, good evening. I want to take a moment to extend my heartfelt gratitude to everybody who participated in our recent banner town halls, town halls and listening sessions. It takes courage and compassion to come together, share honest feedback, and engage in conversations that aren't always easy, especially when the goal is to make things better for all of us. Our classified professionals continue to show resilience and dedication during this challenging transition. I note that the banner implementation has brought moments of frustration and certainty, and I deeply appreciate everyone's patience and willingness to listen and learn together. The feedback from our classified professionals has been invaluable, and it reminds us of the importance of leading with care and empathy as we navigate change. I also want to recognize and thank our administrators and managers across the district for being present, offering support, and advocating for the resources our classified professionals need. The frustration we've heard are not simply about learning something new, they stem from our shared concern that our students always receive the highest level of service and support, that the care for our students is what connects us. As we move forward, let's continue to hold on to that sense of unity and care that defines who we are as SOC CD. Together, through collaboration and compassion, we will emerge stronger and more connected than ever. And know that I, in my role, remain committed to supporting everyone in every way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, 4.2, Board Request for a Report, and that would be this time the plan to replace the grant funding.
All right, just, um, for background, remember, uh, last month, um, the board directed staff to develop a plan to replace the grant funding that would have, uh, supported paid workforce development internship. And so the goal is to basically have continuity in these opportunities, um, through institutional efforts, since the board, um, is opting to not move forward with the grant agreement. So with that in mind, I will ask President Stern if he could talk about the, uh, plan moving forward.
Thank you, Chancellor. What I would say is, and I have with me today somewhere, there he is, and there she is, John Hermio and Carrie Irwin are here, uh, and the two of them, as well as their colleague, Israel Dominguez, have been really instrumental in developing, over the course of the last couple of years, a process, an operation, and an actual MOU by which we can take grant dollars, nonprofit dollars, uh, government dollars, um, and use them in this very creative way to facilitate and build student internships, um, by subsidizing, uh, what the employee would normally have to pay for this internships. This started, uh, out of a state-funded program called LEP. Uh, as you may know, uh, in the face of some budgetary woes, uh, the state not only stopped LEP, but actually clawed back, uh, the money they had already, uh, given for that purpose. Uh, we were then very fortunate, thanks to this same, uh, expert team, uh, to procure a Samweli grant of $3 million for this purpose, um, to create more internships through subsidized, um, payment for the student, um, salary, uh, so that the employer would be paying half and other funding would be paying half. So in the process of developing these, and that was the model that was going to be used, uh, for the, the grant that we will no longer be accepting, um, we have a model in place and ready to go, and that's months and months of work. I, I also, uh, want to thank Priya Jerome and, and her team, uh, because it took months just to hammer out an MOU between an industry employer, um, and the college that would, um, pull together all the understandings and rights and responsibilities of those parties. This doesn't come easily. So with that model in place, uh, we will continue to search for other grant funding, we will continue to hope that maybe other government funding will become available. We hope that some of the fundraising that was promised tonight, um, might actually come to fruition, uh, because for each of those dollars, uh, we are ready to invest them in students. For each industry employer that we connect with, uh, as you trustee Jamal cited in your relationship, um, that you brought us with Amazon, um, we are ready to go. Our team is ready to go to put more of these subsidized, uh, work-based learning experiences in place for our students. So that is our plan going forward. It means that every time something does come forward, whether you're an industry employer or the money to subsidize that industry employer, we are ready from day one to send in a team and develop more internships. And that came from having these other grant funding sources, uh, even before, uh, this one that we will no longer be accepting.
Madam President, a point of order.
Yes.
What is this? I mean, what, what are, what are we talking about here? What, what is this report? I mean, I, I'm, may I call, did I, did I miss something?
I think it was the second half of, the second half of the motion last month was that staff would come back with plans.
Okay, I'm reclaiming my time. So, um, I, I don't know why we're doing this. I admit, I missed it, I would not have voted for this. Um, I think that the staff and the administration and board members are already trying to find money. Um, I neglect, I knew the amount, uh, that I brought in, uh, via Amazon, but I decided not to say it, it didn't seem the right thing to do, is $2.3 million. Uh, and not disparaging my fellow board members, I think I'm in a unique position in the community, in my relationships, and I leverage them. Okay? So, and I, I don't know why, why are we limiting ourselves to $750,000? We should be seeking much more than that. And we're not seeking like a one-for-one replacement for the grant that was lost that we never had, that we never put into our budget in the first place. I think this is a waste of staff's time. Uh, you're already working every day to raise funds. Our foundations, the Saddleback College Foundation, Irvine Valley, Irvine Valley College Foundation has a full-time staff that does this. I encourage all of my board members, um, and if you want, I can give some tips, I'm pretty good at fundraising and identifying opportunities in the community, so I'm happy to, to work with, with fellow board members on that. Not that you're not good at it, I know you are, I'm just happen to, uh, be in a position to do some things. So, um, I, first of all, I don't support limiting it to just replacing the grant that we never had. So, um, I think that's short-sighted. I think we should shoot for much, much more than $750,000. I mean, we have 50,000 students, well, between Saddleback and IVC, um, we should be seeking tens of millions, not $750,000. So I don't support this. Um, I, I'm sorry the staff was asked to do this, I, I missed the vote last month, and my apologies for that.
Trustee Prendergast?
You didn't miss it. It was a rider that I, I'm on the record of trying to stop, because this is what Congress does all the time. They put you in a position that if you vote no on something, you're, or yet, like you, I don't want this, but I can't say no because I want this, like, I, I think it was wrong for legal to tell us that this was okay to be added to the agenda item. Um, I have, right here in my notes, why? Waste of staff time and energy, exactly what you said. No, but I, we're asking them to find money we didn't have because they went out and found money that we didn't accept. That, that blows me away. I, I just don't understand it. And I, I mean, I've been doing this for 15 years, but I still might remember my first day up in Sacramento at the new trustee training, and then going up there with other trustees and hearing it again, our job is not to micromanage. And this is micromanaging in its finest. And I, like I said, I was against it on that day, and the only reason I said yes is because I kind of had to, because it was part of the other agenda item. And so if we have to vote on this, I'm voting no.
There isn't any vote.
Well, okay.
Trustee Bartlet?
Okay, so that was my addition to the last motion at the last meeting, and it wasn't to micromanage staff or to just put a request out there for $750,000 to raise. If we get millions, that's great. But I think in looking at it, um, and looking at all of the contacts and connections that we have as trustees, you know, trustee Jamal makes a really good point, we all know companies out there, and this should encourage, it was meant to encourage the trustees to really take a look at all your contacts and connections and relationships, and see how we can have, um, kind of a cooperative relationship with staff. All we need to do is identify, um, potential parties, companies out there that might be interested, and then turn it over to, you know, President Stern and his team. They are, they're ready to go. They can take all the information, make the further contacts and connections, and kind of take it from there. So it was more as an adjunct for all of us here on the dais to say, what can we do more than, you know, what's already being done? Staff's doing a great job, but I think if we all look inwards, we can utilize what we know as far as employers and contacts and help make that extra difference, whether it's 700,000 or it's $10 million. Um, by all of us working together, I think we can really bring some extra dollars in to, um, help those student internships. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that report over?
Yeah, and I just want to make mention, remember that the board did establish a goal aligned with Inspire 2035, um, with regard to engaging with external stakeholders to help with some of our, our workforce development initiatives. So I think that also exists, and so I think this is congruent with, you know, the board goals as well. And then I would, I would add that, you know, any kind of partnership that the board, um, establishes that would benefit our district and students would be, you know, kind of broadly, let's say, beneficial to both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley, because you have to remember, there's also loss of funds at, at the other college as well, from the federal level. Thank you.
Okay. Are we on to the next part then? Okay, so number five is public hearings, there aren't any. And we have an opportunity to listen to our favorite clerk, Mr. Prendergast, read some more resolutions.
Agenda item 6.1, a resolution recognizing the 40th anniversary of Irvine Valley College, whereas on October 22nd, 1985, I'm older than that, Irvine Valley College, IVC, was officially dedicated as an independent institution of higher learning, having previously operated as Saddleback College North. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby recognizes and celebrates the 40th anniversary of Irvine Valley College for its outstanding contributions to student success, academic excellence, workforce development, and community impact. Be it further resolved that the Board commends the students, faculty, classified professionals, administrators, alumni, and community partners who have built and shaped the legacy of Irvine Valley College, and looks forward to its next era of innovation and excellence. I have a motion in a second.
Trustee Jamal made the motion, and it was seconded by trustee Rydel.
And I'm liking the IVC blue up here for most.
On a seven to zero vote with advisory vote, also yes, this motion carries. Resolution 6.2, please.
All right. Resolution recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month, whereas October is nationally recognized as Filipino-American History Month, commemorating the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States on October 18th, 1587, in Morro Bay, California. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby recognize October as Filipino-American History Month, and encourages the campuses and community to participate in programs, activities, and learning opportunities that honor the history, culture, and contributions of Filipino-Americans. We have a motion in a second.
On a vote of seven to zero, with student trustee voting yes as well, the motion carries. 6.3?
A resolution recognizing Invisible Disabilities Week, October 19th to, to October 25th, whereas Invisible Disabilities Week is observed nationally in October to bring awareness and understanding to the challenges faced by individuals whose disabilities may not be immediately apparent, including but not limited to chronic illnesses, neurological differences, mental health conditions, and other impairments. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby recognizes the week of October 19th to 25th, 2025, as Invisible Disabilities Week, and encourages faculty, staff, students, and the broader community to engage in activities and learning opportunities that promote greater awareness, understanding, and inclusion of individuals with invisible disabilities.
I'm going to move this item. Second. Now, uh, I know that we just voted on this and didn't have a, a moment for discussion, but I did, uh, I was the person that brought this up to our chancellor, um, and it is actually this week, and for those that don't know, I, uh, do suffer from single-sided deafness, which is not immediately apparent. So for all the trustees on my left, whenever they're trying to talk to me, uh, I usually can't hear them unless I turn my head the entire way. So, um, I don't know, I think it's important for folks to be aware that just because someone doesn't look like they have a disability doesn't mean that they're fully capable. Uh, I've oftentimes been in social situations where people try to say something to me, they're on my left side, I don't respond, and they just think that I'm really rude. So, uh, if you do try to talk to me and you're on my left and I don't respond, I promise you, I didn't hear you. And that's my excuse. Thank you.
And on top of that, I, I, I appreciate this. Those of you who were at the board retreat know that I'm dyslexic and that neurodivergence is, is an issue as well. And I appreciate you bringing this item forward for many reasons.
Thank you. Did we read it yet?
Yeah, oh yeah. You'd read the vote.
That's what I meant. Okay, on a seven to zero vote, with student trustee also voting yes, the motion carries. Okay, number seven, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, we have done 7.1. 7.2, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Okay, wait a second. Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Dack, uh, that, uh, the board policy revision for approval. Is there any discussion?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Marsha.
No, I just want to thank everyone for cleaning up the board policy about trustee communications with each other. It's a lot better now, so thank you. Thank to the, the committee that looked over it. Thank you.
Okay.
I just had a clarification, I think it's obvious, and thank the subcommittee, I think this came out of the subcommittee, for the work you did on this. Under election, election of officers, just, I think, so we're clear, and I think it is clear, but it, it's also silent, it said officers shall serve one year, which is true. Um, but that doesn't mean there's a limit on how many years they can serve. Uh, it could be one year, it could be more, it's- It, it's silent on whether they can serve another term. It just says one year. So, um, I mean, I understand it because I've been on the board that we have had officers serve two years, sometimes even three years. I'm not recommending one way or the other. I think it depends on the circumstance. I think one of the things we have discussed on this board is that there isn't a formal succession. Even though, uh, I shouldn't say even though, there is no formal succession. And I think that's, we discussed this issue a, I think it was two or three years ago. And based on the league's recommendations to us, the league had recommended not doing any type of formal succession because you, um, we may have a board member who with majority of board does not, do not want to uh, either hold on or, or be in an officer position. So I think that's, I think that's clear in here, but just when I read the line, Anne Marie, about officers shall serve one year, didn't want the implication to be that, that it's a limit. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee also voting yes, the motion carries. Seven point three.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Dack. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's vote. The motion fails.
Fails.
It says.
It's a glitch.
No. Six to zero and one abstention.
Okay. That's okay, I just looked at that first. In red. Okay, so, uh, on a six to zero with one abstention, the motion carries. Despite. The what? It doesn't know. Okay. And the student trustee, um, I can't find that. Okay. Then we're done, seven point four, trustees' request for attending conferences.
So moved. Second.
The motion has been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please. Okay, on a seven to zero vote with student trustee also voting yes, the motion carries. Presentations. We have a presentation, Career Technical Education Report.
Good evening, President Edman, Chancellor Barnes and trustees. My colleague, uh, Rick Miranda and myself are here to present to you our career education report, which is done once every two years in accordance to our AR and, um, our California EDco seventy-eight zero one six. So what we have for you today is, um, the presentation for each college and then we'll be open for questions afterwards. So as you know, um, Saddleback has had great success, uh, since our last report for you. Uh, we have continued to meet our students' needs with satisfaction of seventy point four percent of our alums surveyed, indicating that they secured jobs within the areas that they, um, were studying in. And in addition to that, as you heard earlier from, um, trustees and our president, in the past couple of weeks, we found out that we're number one out of forty-two colleges is in Orange County, LA and San Diego for helping students achieve, um, so, social mobility and moving their income after completing our programs. With that, I'd like to go in and share with you about our programs. Um, as you know, Saddleback has many degrees, but we organize them in about, um, in thirty-five career ed program uh, areas. Of these, there is a hundred and seventy certificates and degrees that we have. And our career ed programs account for approximately thirty-one percent of our FTES. So a big part of our portfolio. And our awards are thirty percent of these career ed programs as well. So as part of our analysis that we do, um, every other year, uh, we look at program areas with positive demand, meaning labor market, um, demand as well as success outcomes. And, um, from that, we also will decipher for you programs that either have just pos- positive demand or positive outcomes. I'm gonna share a little bit about some new programs that we're working on as well as program supports and, uh, highlights. So as you can see, here is our list of programs that have positive demand and success outcomes. Um, and you'll see we're highlighting nursing, as you all know. This is a need for both our area and the county, uh, and statewide. And so it meets both the labor market demand as well as the outcomes results. And along with that is the list of other programs that also fulfill that same criteria. Of highlight under that list that I wanted to uh, have your attention to is our medical lab technology program. This particular program is, uh, showing positive labor market. We've had good completions and steady growth. And it actually developed, um, about five years ago. And so we actually, in this last year, have expanded our facilities to double the size of this program. And as you'll hear early, uh, later in my slides, uh, we are looking at expanding this program into a baccalaureate. Um, here you'll see our list of programs that have, uh, either positive demand or positive success outcomes. And under this list, you'll see that there are some programs where in which uh, the labor market might not, uh, demonstrate that there is a demand. But we do have students who are interested in completing the program and then vice versa. We might have labor de- market demand, uh, but the students are not completing. And, um, so I'll, I'll highlight one of the programs like that. Our CDE program, you'll notice that the labor market demand is softening. Some of that is due to the changes in, um, transitional kindergarten, pushing our students in the childcare centers up into kindergarten earlier. Um, and so the demand for the childcare workers are not as high as they used to be. But the students are still interested in completing the programs. We are looking at, uh, uh, making some adjustments to the program to better support our students, focusing on special ed, um, and also focusing on apprenticeship for our child development, uh, students as well. This is a very small list, uh, very small print list of all of our programs that are career oriented, that we're working on with our K-12 partners. As you can see there, it ranges from accounting, um, to architecture, to child development, to computers, uh, culinary, um, automotive, and then all the way down to theater arts. So a varied amount of career pathways that we're introducing to our high school students through dual enrollment as well. New programs for us for this twenty-five, twenty-six school year, you'll see listed there um, of highlight are the programs that we have moved into non-credit, um, like our administrative medical assistant, clinical medical assistant and comprehensive medical assistant. You'll also notice that that also has a, um, English language learner pathway cohort where we support students who are English as a section, second language learner in their progress through those programs. Um, and as part of the strategy at Saddleback, what we've identified as programs that might lead to lower entry wage jobs, we're moving them into non-credit, allowing students to access those programs at no cost. And then also helping us to connect it to our ELL pathway dollars so that we could support them with the language skills development as well. And, um, of note also in spring is we are looking at, um, our first, uh, surgical tech cohort. We are currently accepting applications at the moment and, uh, look forward to seeing how it, the semester goes with that first cohort. So new programs that we have under development, you'll notice for next year, fall twenty-six, um, we have our games and interactive media, uh, kitchen and bath design, music and audio production. And then we're hoping, still planning for summer twenty twenty-eight where we'll have physical therapy assistant. And then, um, as we look at continuing our efforts, um, along with academic senate leadership, we are considering programs in, uh, medical lab technologist. Our current AA is in technician, and so we're hoping to elevate that to the baccalaureate level as a technologist. Our, we are looking into building performance. Cybersecurity was an area of interest for us, but that program has been pending CSU approval at other colleges for over two years. So we're waiting for that, um, decision to come through before we put ours in. And then, of course, our nursing, which was pending AB fourteen hundred, which unfortunately was vetoed by our governor. But we are very hopeful that, um, our legislative representative will continue to bring that, uh, item forward every year. And this last year, the legislature actually, um, there were no votes against it. So it's, I think we're making progress and at some point it's gonna happen. And then lastly, as we look at developing our physical therapy assistant program, we're also hoping that we would then be able to add on the baccalaureate program along with it. So, uh, if you're needing any further information about our career programs at Saddleback, uh, there's a link there for you. Uh, and now I'll hand it over to Rick.
Do you want questions after we're both done or now?
It's up to you.
Do you have a question now?
So on the CDE.
Yeah. Yes.
Being somewhat familiar with the TK issue. In order to be a TK teacher, you have to have a California teaching credential.
Yes.
Is there any efforts or thought of trying to work with Cal State Fullerton's or UCI's or even Chapman's teacher training, like somehow tie that they've already kind of done some of the work and can use that as like a pathway if that's what they choose to do?
Most definitely. We are always looking towards our four-year university partners to build out, um, you know, uh, pathways for them, for our students to be able to transfer into a credentialing program. I think part of what we're looking at right now is the programming at the four-year universities. It's a little combination of CDE as well as, um, your credentialing teacher prep program. And so, uh, working to see which courses within our pathways for CDE will translate over and then adding on additional. Uh, luckily for us here at Saddleback, we also have a credentialing education program as well. And so our faculty are working on, uh, looking at what that looks like as we go forward.
Um, how solid is our ELL dollars?
Um, we actually, um, have dollars in place for another year. Um, and then the state chancellor's office is getting ready to put out a grant for five years. And I think it's five hundred thousand dollars. And so we're hoping that we would be able to apply for that. Um, the chancellor's office has actually highlighted our programs, both at, um, IVC and Saddleback. And so we think we're very well positioned for that grant once it gets announced.
And that would be enough?
Um, I think it would tie us over. And then we will continuously, you know, um, a lot of what we do is, uh, looking at planning ahead. And so we always have enough funds in place to do what we're looking at now. And as we look to expand, we're seeking additional dollars. Um, we are also looking for other dollars to expand the ELL pathways to other, uh, schools. So right now it's really focused in our School of Health and Wellness. But we're hoping to, uh, access some additional chancellor's office money to build that out as well.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jamal?
Yeah, this question probably, well, you can answer it, Tram, or the chancellor, or Elliot. When Townsend comes here next month to present their legislative update, are we gonna talk about a strategy to finally get us to a baccalaureate nursing degree here at Saddleback College?
I, I, I know that, can I just make mention? I know that trustee Milchiker also asked the same question, like, why do we do it when the governor vetoed last year? And the governor did say last year, if you bring it again, I'm gonna veto, veto it. So we knew that, however, there, every statewide organization, the league, the CIOs, CSSOs, academic senate, everyone was like, we need to do this again. There was so much support and as was already mentioned, there was no opposition. And so, but the, frankly, it's just politics at the top, the Cal State universities.
But there is opposition, Julie.
Well, the Cal States.
Cal States.
Well, I, that, exactly.
That's pretty formidable, that's.
Right, however, so, so I think everybody's gonna ramp up again. And so we were successful at a particular level, but we need a governor who's going to support this. So there's a lot of optimism for the future, um, with this. So I know that we're gonna be ramping up. I know for the trustees who will be at the league convention in November in Anaheim, that'll be a big topic of discussion as well, so.
And if I can add just a little bit, um, my viewpoint, uh, first I should mention, and by way of preamble, is a minority viewpoint. Um, I believe that the problem is that we've gone too small in our advocacy. That is, by focusing on the BSN and then limiting it to fifteen, ten, we end up with nothing and it ends up getting with their veto of nothing, right? And I don't even, we would have stood a very small chance of getting it if there were ten colleges, even if you had signed it. Um, so I think the fundamental problem with us, and it's something that needs to be discussed with our league advocates as well as our own advocates, is whether the CSU veto should continue in the legislation. So other states do not operate with a veto power at the university level for any program that they deem competitive. If a community college can show net workforce demand that cannot be met by the universities, and I am talking about states like Texas and Florida, then the community colleges are allowed to pursue those programs. So if we want to be competitive as a state economically, I believe the conversation with our next governor, whoever that might be, should be about a bigger change in legislation and not just about a BSN. But the nature of higher ed is we have to be incremental to succeed and we will continue to pursue BSNs as long as that's the way to go. But the fundamental problem, and you both alluded to this, is the CSU veto.
Yeah, and, um, oh, go ahead. Now, I was.
Trustee.
I was gonna say that I think the CSUs have, have the governor's ear. And that's why he continually vetoes it. So they probably have a stronger lobby than the community colleges, which is
Yes.
kind of odd because we have many, many more students than the Cal States have. But, but, um, you know, if he, if the CSUs have his ear and they're worried about they're gonna take their students away if we have a ba- baccalaureate degree, then that's a big problem, you know? So you're right.
And, um, today, um, I did, as part of my role as a CIO, past president, we did meet in the league for ACL and the topic of baccalaureate degrees did come up. And it is true, the issue is not just the BSN duplication. It actually is hitting us, the cybersecurity. We're running into it with, uh, physical therapy. We're running into it with many other programming, and so it is bigger. Um, and so the conversation, and I think if we were to take a strategy, it would be the duplication as a topic in and of itself and whether or not it should have CSU and UC, um, you know, right to, uh, deny, uh, us to duplicate. There are suggestions that the league is putting out as potential areas to investigate. If we were to not have duplication, one of them is workforce, as, um, Dr. Stern mentioned. And then the others are, um, if the four-year university doesn't work with us on pre- bringing their four-year program to our campus when we're wanting it or needing it, that we would then be able to build it. And, and I think both of those suggestions are really good potentials for us to revisit the language. And we're hoping to actually advocate for that change in the language itself about duplication.
Yeah.
Trustee Milchiker?
There's several things, um, I, there's a great demand for allied medical careers now because we have an aging population and there's always a demand for, for medical people. As a matter of fact, um, I was in Houston. As a matter of fact, I was in Houston, you know, where my husband had a lot of treatment there at MD Anderson Cancer Center, and I visited the Coleman College, which is right there in the middle of the largest medical center in the world, right there in Texas in Houston, and they have an incredible number of allied medical professions that they're teaching there, just all of them, and they have the wonderful equipment, and it's just a wonderful place, and the students get jobs right there, so I think that's a really good place to go, is to really concentrate on CTE classes where the students are really going to get jobs. Another thing along this line, it used to be on the state chancellor's website, it used to have a salary schedule of what students could make, the ROI, return on investment for the students if they would take a particular career path. And I remember, I don't know if we have that or if that's on.
We do, we do.
That would be great, because I remember in reading about it, the career with the highest potential for earnings in the CTE was called water technology, it was just plumbing. So they really do well financially, so I don't know if we want to think about offering that, but that's something to think about.
Thank you. Trustee Bart.
So I understand the CSUs were objecting to the baccalaureate in nursing, but what about the UC regions? Did they object as well?
They're usually not as objecting because I think they feel like they have enough students, and their programs are usually full anyways. It's usually our CSU partners that are the ones that are blocking.
Okay, so the legislative fix would be really aimed at the CSUs, not the UC regions?
Yeah.
For all disciplines, nursing and others, okay.
And I think overall, because it's just been a hindrance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Irvine Valley?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Start with a thank you for Tram providing a little bit of the board policy and the legislative title, five demands, and moving forward of this. You know, I also want to mention, as a district, we are always looking for what is relevant, effective, and accountable. The accountable piece is very important to all of us as we develop programs. And as we heard earlier, one of the developments that we look at for the accountability that is both in our board policy, but also for our centers of excellence in the region, which we take programs to look at impacts with other programs, is there positions out there for these individuals when they're done? Is here as programs of positive demand and success, duplication, verification, and completion as well. So we do have three items that we look at, but what we typically focus on here, both IVC and Saddleback, is this two-pronged approach of programs of positive demand and success. What you see here are for IVC by department, accounting, administration of justice, biotech, all the way down to real estate. What we see here are positive demand and success. Within these departments themselves, there could be multiple certificates and awards and degrees also, so please understand that these are departments that hold these, and to see a more comprehensive list, including all the labor market data in which you suggested, trustee Milchiker, is in the appendix portion of the report itself with a full breakdown. I believe we both campuses do this. And then we also see here programs with positive demand or success. See dance, design model making, and rapid prototyping, and which may be surprising to you, mathematics. Mathematics is one that is kind of like, hmm, that's an interesting one, and I called out that one program just to be specific. Our math faculty, data analytics and statistical programming is what they're really looking. As we have an advent to more AI, people wonder what will they be doing in the future? Data mining's been around for a while, but to continue understanding the formula and the algorithms behind it, they're creating the data analytics and traditional programming on this one. So just want to call that out as something novel, we feel. Also, as we've seen, just call out a few programs, digital media art, you can see has all three checkmarks, and what we see also are the, some of the names of those individual programs or certificates, awards underneath these. So digital media art, we can see the different type of AAs or certificate that's involved. Again, this is a program that's doing very well. Human development, as we see human development, child care programs are doing well here at IVC as well. Paralegal, and paralegal is doing well, both have been doing well in credit, but we also moved part of our paralegal program to non-credit. Once again, similarly to Saddleback, the idea is to bring more students in, offer them that first step into a career, when often we've heard historically from, again, our centers of excellence, if it is not a living, sustainable wage, they would not give us the checkmark, if you will, so we can bring the programs forward. But this has changed. When you look at Vision 2030 from our state chancellor's office all the way down, the idea is to create pipelines, first steps in, allow them to come in, maybe at a lower wage, and a lower cost to come in, to get their foot in the door, if you will, to continue on, then to our credit programs and beyond. So thankful to see many of our programs are adding the non-credit aspect. And then again, math, it's brand new, so I wanted to put it here as well, just to call your attention to it, and we look forward to its future success. I want to spend a few minutes, minutes, I'll try to be quick, from, talk a little bit about the past to present. You know, what was the historical identity? We hear about 40 years, but the historical identity, we have a very strong transfer legacy, and we have an expanding and growing and burgeoning career education. This is new, both in credit and non-credit. Yes, we've had some building over the years, but we also have now, I would say, active conversations across the campus into what is career education beyond the traditional classroom thoughts of just the transfer. So we've seen this, if you remember from last year, the interactive media arts, we see non-credit coming in, again, math and other CE programs. Now, I'm not telling you or sharing with you anything that is novel as a system, but this is all very intentional with the strategic alignments, all the way from the governor's roadmap of education success to the Vision 2030, to our own district strategic plan, and IVC's strategic plan, Spire 2035 as well. And no, all three of these are emphasizing the same thing, the bottom line, they are all emphasizing future workforce needs. They all emphasize this. Employment outcomes, they all emphasize, and I'm saying this to emphasize myself, and lastly, economic and social mobility. So these points are something that we all have to, well, we should, we should have always been accountable to, but we are now moving in that direction. I say moving because we have a history in the California community college system of looking at something called Community College 1.0, which you see here, 2.0 and 3.0. The idea of the 1.0 starts back with the idea of who gets in. It's about access, the who gets in approach, right? 2.0 was about completion and student success that came through, or who finishes, which we cared about, the who finish approach. Even our student center funding formula is on the who finish, not the other, what does this mean for their future career mobility, but who finishes? So it's even tied to how we're funded. And then lastly, the 3.0 approach is workforce and economic mobility, but let's change that language, is who thrives after leaving? So we see this transition over time of these approaches in the system. Now, at IVC, if you heard earlier from our senate president, our faculty senate president, the idea of the future-ready and community practice that we're holding here at IVC, we are moving in this direction with a framework of 3.0 to share with the campus, to share at all levels, so that we all understand where we need to do, what we need to do to move forward to support our students. Along with that, we are part of the chancellor's office of Strategic Enrollment Management Program, and that strategic enrollment management is really, we have chosen to identify that as adult learners 25 and older. Many of you have been to other colleges, heard of other colleges, I've been to others that we talk about the adult learner, but it ends up being talk mostly, because to have to, and I say have to, not should, that we have to support those returning or first-time college students, that is a commitment, that we have to understand where have they been, what do they need, different from a traditional student that comes straight from high school, right? So these programs need to be aligned with short-term certificates, fast certificates, upskilling and reskilling. As you can see here, nearly 63% of our students here at IVC are 25 or older. And then we can break down as part-time within there, and also how many sit in the non-credit. Non-credit is a strong force and a strong key for a pipeline to our future credit programs and our future success for our students as well. Now, we see program momentum, as I talked about earlier, and now again, with the expansion of CE, led by our faculty. I have to thank our faculty champions on our campus who are now picking up, have had, and the new, who are now picking up much of the ideas of programming of what we can do going forward. Again, this is through the ELL pathways, we've had the experience, and now we can actually bring this home to our own campus to serve our local community as well. And this is through our English learners programs as well, and moving the, many of our programs to non-credit. Now, the program that I'm speaking of, for an example, is our medical assisting. Again, thanking our faculty, because you see here is, it's not only our health sciences or biology faculty are doing this, but it is the collaborative effort with our ASL faculty who have partaken in these ELL pathways for medical healthcare in the past. We also have had some initial conversations with our industry partners to know that it's needed in the local area, like City of Hope and Memorial Care near our campus, and like other campuses, consider how do we make our students even more employable by giving them a more of a stacked approach by laying maybe something like phlebotomy along with it for a medical assisting program? Now, this, these programs you've heard of before, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of points. The idea of support English language learners, hence the ELL pathway in healthcare, right? But the key is here, it's creating a bridge. It's creating a bridge between non-native English speakers and future technical skillsets and programming. It is a bridge then that puts them into the field and also brings them back as we continue to add programming on the credit side to allow them to continue to advance in that field, right? That is through embedded English language support in each classroom, where the ESL instruct, AESL instructors are paired with healthcare training faculty in the classroom real time to support these students. This is incredible, it adds a lot of power for the student's success, and then the students themselves, as they leave, seeing their own goals met. The self-efficacy is immeasurable that they come out and have that ability to move forward themselves, allows them to set that next goal. Now, not only the medical assisting that I talked about, and you'll see also applied medical assisting, but through this same type of programming, the ELL healthcare pathway, our faculty are now talking and exploring the dental assisting, the certified ophthalmic assistant and technician as well, and other allied health roles. All right, I'm going to transition to our K14 for a minute here. So K14 pathways, you know, it's, it's usually, and we've talked about this, Dr. Hernandez and I, we have things like the K12, our K12 partners, right, our high school partners, but it's actually the K14 approach, because we are creating the pathway to our colleges. So it's not only what happens in the K12, but then when are they coming here to step into next, right? So as you can see here, through many of our partners in the schools and the regions in our area, administration of justice, biotechnology, business management, computer information science, and the list goes on. Again, these are all CE pathways. We are offering an opportunity for our students at a first start, younger age, high school, to get a leg up or foot in the door, credits earned, units earned, and move to, when they come to our campus, pathways that are already created in the future. So it is a, it's more of a velocity approach, if you will. Allow students to be kick-started, to move in that direction, to come here with a sense of, greater sense of purpose from the beginning sometimes, when some are unclear. So, you know, we, we value our partnerships, and again, these pathways are pipelines, if you think about it, move all the way through, from our high school partners to us, to employers, and transfer in many cases, and future full awards. Now, some of the new program awards, some of these you've seen a little bit last year when we visited briefly, but they are in full, full offerings, some of them started as early as late last spring. We see practical real estate, real estate investing, real estate and personal finance, game design, digital media art, data analytics, once again, introduction to information technologies. Again, you can see the non-credit certificate approach and credit, again, being intentional in creating those first-step pathways at a low cost to move them in, our students in and through. And then programs under development, as I mentioned earlier, medical assisting, applied medical assisting are the two right now that the curriculum has completed and we're moving forward at this time. And, as I alluded to again earlier, the other idea is with faculty consultation. And that consultation, I should say, is not between an office of instruction, myself and others, it first begins between the faculty to faculty, what is out there? What is out, and if we look at labor market, and that's where the conversations start with the faculty, because they have to have a belief and buy-in to what is needed out there. It's not something that we get to push on them, they first step in and we get to support. So look forward to continue to support the growth in those areas. Now, I will say, before we leave, I have this little catchphrase that I, it's not mine, but I do like the idea, and we're going to kind of live by it a bit more. What you're seeing here today, expressed by us, is that we are not only educating our students, but we're making them employable. We are not only making them employable, but we are also making them mobile. That's what's often not discussed, the mobility of our students. We get hung up on what is the labor market in this area, but that is true for us to be aware of, but it's equally true that many of our students may come into us from an outside area, or maybe, we don't know where they're going to be in their future careers as well, they move. So we want programming that is not only viable locally, but viable through the state and the entire nation. Now, I'll leave you here with our website if you want to continue to kind of peruse and see what other offerings we have here. But again, this effort is really, and thanks to our faculty, looking at having the opportunities and not hearing no, let's try it instead, is probably the key, the key, let's go ahead and try these things. So what you're seeing put into practice at IVC is Community College 3.0 in action, where we're going to connect education to employment, mobility, and economic opportunity. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Questions?
Are there any questions?
No, that's very good.
Oh, sorry, you just ask questions, not me.
Neither one. Any questions?
Yes.
Do we have problems with placement?
In.
Especially the health.
I don't think, as a system, I'll maybe first talk about as a system, we don't, if you're talking while they're in the program versus when they finish.
No, in the program, because they have to do.
For the clinical sites, they have more of the clinicals, because there's a lot of competition.
We are continuously struggling with clinical site placements. You know, we try to work as a Orange County consortium to figure out how to solve those problems, and, you know, we're looking at different ways of approaching it. One of the things that we are investigating is utilizing the apprenticeship model and figuring out how we might be able to partner with different healthcare industry partners to see how we might utilize apprenticeship funding to help support students get placements.
Can I add, and I'm going to.
It's very novel and kind of out there, so we're just investigating the potential.
I'm going to ask, you know, in other districts I've been in, the challenge often led to was because of the for-profits that were trying to buy placements, if you will. I don't know if you see that as much right now, but I would not be surprised if that's still.
It is, and then you'll find that as we go through every legislative season, there's always a potential for some legislation that will allow our. always a potential for some legislation that will allow our outside-of-the-state partners who teach online to be able to do clinical placements here. And that's always another challenge for us, because now you have an outside entity, not even in our local vicinity, trying to get clinical placements. So it is a big issue. You know, as a CIO board, we put that on the agenda to try and advocate for priority for public schools, especially for public healthcare entities.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to mention that when, in my husband's medical office, he would often get medical technicians to, to work back office, and they would be interns, and if they were really good, he'd hire them to stay in the office. It was a really good win-win, because he could really see if someone was really doing a good job, and then he would hire them, so that, I mean, so that's a win-win.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for the consent calendar. She says we don't vote.
No, you do, you just have to, you have to move the motion to accept.
Oh, I didn't understand, that's, okay. Okay. It has been moved by Trustee Prendergast and seconded by Trustee Dack. Can we vote, please? On a seven to zero vote, with student trustee voting yes as well, the motion carries. Now we can go to consent calendar. Just a second. Are there any polls on the consent calendar? Are there any polls? If not, can we go ahead and vote?
Don't move.
I know.
I moved it. Second.
Okay, wait, who moved it? Okay, so it's been moved by Trustee Jamal and seconded by Trustee Dack, that we accept the consent calendar. On a seven to zero vote, with trustee, student trustee voting yes as well, the motion carries. Okay. Number 10, Business Services, Vice Chancellor Amory Gabel. Right, 10.1?
This is the board's, the board just has to...
We just, okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is this, is this 10.1?
Yes, please.
Oh, I, okay.
It has been moved by Trustee Prendergast and seconded by Trustee Bartlett to approve the Award of Architectural Services for Phase Two of the ADA Transition Project. Is there any discussion?
Good job, I don't know who manages Amory, was it Mithani, I don't know, or someone else on your team? I just love the competition for the award.
Yeah, it's a joint effort between Mithani's team and Priya Jerome's team, our executive director of procurement, so...
I see Priya there, good job, getting a lot of competition. We like that.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote, with student trustee voting yes, the motion carries. Number 11, Human Resources, Academic Employees and Management Personnel.
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion?
Don't move, and I have a comment to make.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Milchaker and seconded by Trustee Dack.
Is it academic employees?
Yes, Trustee Milchaker.
I just want to mention that on the agenda, President Stern is retiring, effective July 2026, he's worked here seven and a half years, and I have to tell you, Saddleback College was just mentioned as the number-one community college by the Register in Orange County. It's in the top 10 community colleges in America. Saddleback at ATEP is fabulous, with culinary arts and automotive technology, was like a genius thing to do. The student center building is like a, an Apple store, and the students love it. The students in Saddleback College get the highest salary after graduating from Saddleback College or after completing Saddleback College than any other school in 40 different schools in South Orange County. So he's done a fabul, you have got all these things to put on your resume, so, so he's done...
He doesn't want, he doesn't need to do that anymore.
So this doesn't just come from, from nothing, so he's really done a fabulous job being president of Saddleback College in these seven and a half years, and really, the college is just booming and just doing as best as it could be. So we really want to thank you for your, for your service for Saddleback College for all these years. I know you deserve a good retirement, but we really thank you for all your excellent work as, as a college president, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Bartlett?
I just got an error message, says our support team is here to help you 24/7, what's the urgency of your issue? Can we get tech support here?
Just X out of there.
Okay, is there any other discussion on 11.1? Let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote, with student trustee voting yes as well, the motion carries. And I'm giving the gavel to the Vice President for a moment.
All right, we're going to move on to item 11.1, 11.2, Classified Personnel. Of course, my screen is too small. Classified Personnel Actions Ratifications. I believe I asked if there are changes on this one, right?
Yeah, no changes, yeah, no changes.
No changes, okay.
Move the item.
Moved by Trustee Bartlett, seconded by Clerk Prendergast. Let's vote. The, the motion passes seven to zero with a trustee advisory vote of yes. We're going to move on to item 11.3, Adjustment to Faculty Association Salary Schedule.
I do have a comment on this. It is very rare that the Vice Chancellor of HR calls the FA and tells them, I have a time-sensitive matter. This is not a finished product, but they had to approve us pending ratification to do an 11-month salary schedule, so that Saddleback College can begin to hire an 11-month faculty member to put together the physical therapy assistant program. So I'm going to let you know that this is not a finished project, product, FA have, and I have more MOU items to negotiate, but so we could fly the position, I want to thank the FA for allowing us to put it out there pending ratification by their unit. So this will be the first time we have an 11-month faculty member, and that's the purpose of it. Thank you.
All right, that's fantastic. I will take a motion.
Move the item.
Moved by Trustee Bartlett, seconded by Trustee Riddell. Let's vote. All right, motion passes with a six to zero vote, with President Inman absent, and a affirmative vote by the student trustee.
Motion failed again?
We can count. All right, moving on from 11.3, there's nothing in item 12, and we have item 13, Information Items. We have Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, we have the monthly financial status report. Moving on to written and oral reports from administration, I believe we're going to start with Chancellor Barnes.
All right, just quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge, it seems like it was thematic earlier today when we were talking about the democratic process and civic engagement and First Amendment rights, and using your voice, and speaking of that, I'll have the opportunity to join five of our trustees, including our student trustees, tomorrow at the National Conference for Trustees, and I think there we're going to be able to really use our voice to set the stage for a national, for federal legislative priorities, and so looking forward to that. And speaking of the democratic process, I'm going to acknowledge Dr. Stern over here, who I reluctantly accepted his resignation, but I've been receiving a lot of feedback. I know, obviously, literally big shoes to fill, and then big shoes to fill just in general, and so I just want to assure everyone at Saddleback College that there will be a very inclusive process. I've already reached out, I know Ryan is reaching out on my behalf to the faculty and our classified professionals, because I would, I want to meet with you and make sure that I am hearing from you with regard to what you are seeking in the next, in the next presidency. So there will be an inclusive process, and we hope to build upon the legacy set by Dr. Stern. So there's, we're going to have plenty of time to roast you, you gave us all year long to do that, so, so stay tuned for that.
Yeah, so Chancellor, I've just, because I'm going to hold in, in abeyance, things that I want to say, because it's early, is his, is your last day end of June?
July.
Or the last board meeting you will attend will be May or June?
The last board meeting I will attend will be the, the one in June.
Okay.
I, my retirement is mid-July, so that I will have a couple weeks as non-president to support the new president.
Okay, so the last board meeting is June?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Planning my vacation around.
I'm actually good at roasting, but I won't do it.
Okay, sorry that I'm disappearing a little bit tonight. Okay, speaking of presidents, Dr. John Hernandez.
No report.
Okay, President Stern.
Because you're all going back into closed session, no report.
Thank you. Dr. McDonald?
No report.
No report. Dr. Visca-Chill?
No report.
Dr. Gabel?
No report.
Some of us have to be at the airport in like eight hours. So that's the way it goes. Okay, so we're going into closed session, and there will be no readouts about that. So the meeting is adjourned.